Well, I guess it's good afternoon. My name is Richard Dainard. I'm the Chair of the Faculty Senate Agenda Committee, which is essentially the steering committee for the Faculty Senate at Northeastern. And I guess since we're supposed to be speaking about the state of the university, I'll begin very briefly on that. The state of the university, as far as I can see, is we're doing really extremely well. And, you know, all things are pointing in the very positive directions. I'm sure you'll hear much more about that from the next two speakers. In particular, from our perspective at the Senate Agenda Committee, we see the relations between the Senate and the central administration is off to a very good start this year. In my remaining four and a half minutes,[97.02][97.02](laughter) I want to talk about, I only have time to talk about one thing, so the one thing I want to talk about is the, our commitment as faculty members to Northeastern. And I want to say something about the nature of commitments. We don't make commitments only to people or to institutions that are perfect. If we did, we'd make very few such commitments and they wouldn't last very long. But we do make commitments to those who or that we want to help become the very best they possibly could be. Those are the people and those are the institutions that we choose to make commitments to. And that's what we want to do with the commitments. And in light of that, I want to discuss four aspects of the faculty commitment to Northeastern. The first one, which is the, I guess the sort of almost goes without saying one, is as faculty, our commitment to teaching and scholarship. I think all of us have the same standard here, which is that we want our teaching and our scholarship to be the very best that it could possibly be. And of course, that's perhaps our major contribution to the university, but it's not our only important contribution by any means. The contribution we have to our departments and schools is also absolutely critical. We are key players in the decisions, whether it's hiring, or curriculum, or academic policy, that determine what Northeastern will be like in the next 10, 20, and 30 years to come. We're guiding the ship in the, if the devil or someone I know says, "The angel is in the details." We provide the details of what the academic program at Northeastern actually looks like. And that's, you know, in the end, what Northeastern is and has to offer the world, is a hopefully world-class academic program. Now, the university as a whole, as opposed to your departments and schools, and, you know, I think most faculty probably have relatively little experience in the university governance structures beyond their own school, but it's, this is really almost equally important because the university can be the sum of its parts, it can be less than the sum of its parts, or it can be greater than the sum of its parts. And that's where the Faculty Senate and its committees come in. We are responsible for shared governance, for really helping to oversee and determine the academic program and the rules that apply to it and that apply to faculty and the whole, all academic processes here at the university. We do it through resolutions and through the faculty handbook and making, you know, changes, improvements in that as that comes about. We're also doing it increasingly through open discussions at the Senate, and we have discussions scheduled already. We had one already about how to help associate professors move on to full professor. And we have three more, or three more topics, two discussions scheduled, one on our regional campuses and online learning, one on hybrid budgeting, and, you know, they're mixed with that or is part of that discussion also, on the implications of hybrid budgeting and of other, you know, university rules and structures on interdisciplinary programs, interdisciplinary faculty, interdisciplinary research, that when you decentralize particularly, you then have a question, "Well, how do you make the interdisciplinary stuff work?" And we're going to be looking at that as a group. And then, most of the work, as in any organization, most of the work gets done by its committees. Financial Affairs Committee will be doing a report this fall on, you know, salaries and comparable salaries at other institutions and match-made institutions and, you know, where we should be going on that, but they'll also be delving into, you know, other issues in the, you know, financial structure of the university as it affects academics. We have the Faculty Development Committee, Academic Affairs Committee, Committee on Enrollment Practices. So we're, and we also have committees, evaluation committees, to where we regularly participate in the evaluation of academic administrators. And I mention this because we need people to volunteer, or at least we need people to say yes when they're called, because this is critical. This is part of your commitment, our commitment, to make this university the best university it could be. Finally, we are, when the Senate Agenda Committee was elected in April, we huddled in the back of the room and talked about where we wanted to go this year, and one of the first things that came up is we wanted to establish a faculty-giving initiative. And we're going to be presenting this to the Senate a week from today as a proposal seeking the approval of the Senate. And the idea here is that one of the ways we contribute, it's not the most important way by any means, but one way we can contribute, and I think we can really make a significant difference, is through financial giving, but not giving, I'm not talking about just, you know, giving to the general fund and that's it. I'm talking about schools and departments getting together and figuring out, if we could get a few thousand dollars a year to do something, what would we like to do? What would really make a difference? Something that we know about, something that, you know, in an area where we, you know, we, the members of the department of school, actually have, you know, a lot of information and know where a little bit of money would make a difference. So we're looking forward to that happening as well. The bottom line, this is our Northeastern, and let's continue to work together to make it as good a university as it possibly can be. And with that, let me introduce the, I think it's, I think it's the Provost who comes up next, our Provost, Steve Director.[572.32][572.32](applause)
Thank you, Dick. I think I'm the Provost also.[583.12][583.12](laughter) Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our annual Town Hall meeting. Several weeks ago, I met separately with delegations from two brand-new universities in Singapore. They were sent to Northeastern by the Minister of Education in Singapore. They came separately, and they each came to Northeastern to learn about co-op. And the reason for that visit is because they were instructed by the Minister of Education to launch co-op-based education in Singapore. I found these two visits really interesting. First, it was clear that these delegations did their homework. They knew that we were leaders in experientially-based education rooted in co-op. They understood that as a result of this, that we had received more applications to our undergraduate program than any other private institution in the United States. They understood that this fall, our entering freshman class had a median SAT score of 1360, which was up almost 20 points from last fall and 130 points from six years ago. They understood that our U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings had also dramatically increased from 98 in 2006 to 56 this year, which is a rise unparalleled by any other academic institution that I know of. And they understood that we had become more global than we had ever been. In 2006, for instance, only 18% of our incoming freshman class was out of the Boston region. This fall, 42% are out of the Boston region. And in 2006, only 4% of our entering class were international, and this fall, 18% are international. But another reason that I mention the visits by these two institutions is that it clearly illustrates that the most distinguishing feature of our form of education, namely co-op, which is our true competitive advantage, is increasingly becoming something that others are trying to emulate. And the reality is, it's probably not that hard to emulate. This point was also driven further home to me when I attended last week the annual meeting of the National Academy of Engineering. The highlight of this meeting was a special panel session on engineering education. What the panelists said, let me hasten to add, was really not limited to engineering education, but really education much more broadly than that. And all of the panelists were each highly regarded, and they all made two very similar points. First, that online education has come of age and will fundamentally affect the way education is delivered, and we've seen stories about Coursera and EdX and other things. But the second point, and this surprised me somewhat, that they felt that all universities must include an experiential component in their curriculum if they wanted to remain competitive and if they wanted to attract the highest-quality students. The push for experiential education is also coming from other disciplines as well. We hear this from the legal education. Increasingly, law schools want to have an experiential component. So I think while we can all rightly take pride in our leadership in the domain of co-op, and by the way, last year we placed over 7,300 students in co-op assignments around the world, we're going to see increased competition, and not just locally, but internationally as well, as other universities adopt this form of education. Clearly, to maintain our leadership position, we must continuously innovate, like we did when we established the four-year two-coop option, and like we did when we developed the international co-op, where we encourage our students to spend at least one of their co-ops out of this country. But we have to innovate in other areas as well, and that's why we launched the undergraduate initiative last year, that among other things involves a comprehensive review of all of our curricula, with the goal of enhancing flexibility, providing opportunities to all our students to engage in an immersive, global experience, allow our curriculum to accommodate changes in the discipline without expanding credit hours, and providing a means to improve teaching and to assess learning outcomes. And we made a very visible commitment as a university to this last two points by appointing a new Vice Provost for Teaching and Learning. It is also why we launched the University Scholars Program last year, that attracted 42 truly exceptional undergraduates to Northeastern this fall. As many of you know, three years ago, we developed a long-range plan that included a set of stretch goals, and for those of you that are new to our community, this plan can be found on the Provost Office website. Last June, as we do every year, we report our progress on this long-range plan to the Board of Trustees, and due to the hard work and the commitment, as Dick commented, of our faculty and our staff, we have already exceeded many of our goals. For example, in addition to some of the student metrics that I already mentioned, this fall, we welcomed 72 new tenure-and-tenure-track faculty to our campus, and I think you have seen the brochure that lists all of them. This is the largest number of faculty that we've ever hired in a single year. Forty of these faculty are in newly-created positions. That brings our total tenure-and-tenure-track faculty size to 763. We're currently 20 faculty ahead of our plan, that will ultimately add 150 new tenure-and-tenure-track faculty to the, 150 tenure-and-tenure-track faculty positions to the university. And last year, our research awards exceeded $100 million, $104.9, I think it is, in the booklet that you've seen, for the first time. And this is quite an accomplishment for a university that does not have a medical school. By focusing many of our research activities within the broad thematic areas that you're all familiar with, that address real societal needs, we are on track to becoming the home for world-class centers of excellence in a variety of areas such as network science, drug discovery and delivery, urban coastal sustainability, cybersecurity, and health informatics. This past year, we've also addressed a number of critical space needs. Our lease of 140, the Fenway provided the Buvay College of Health Sciences, the College of Engineering, the College of Science, much-needed research space and graduate student space, and provided the School of Pharmacy with an administrative home. We've also begun the renovation of Renaissance Park, which will become ultimately the home to the College of Social Science and Humanities. And we repurposed, most recently, 11,000 square feet of space in the library to house a digital media commons, a cutting-edge facility that includes flexible study spaces, a comprehensive facility for audio and video creation and multimedia projects, and reservable group workrooms with state-of-the-art collections and presentation technologies. We also launched our Graduate Campus Initiative this past year with the opening of a campus in Charlotte and plans for campus in Seattle. This is an innovative approach to growing our graduate professional master's programs, primarily using online and hybrid methods of curriculum. Clearly, I don't have time to mention a number of the other accomplishments that we have achieved this past year, but it's clear that we really are on a great trajectory. And as a result, I have no doubt that we'll continue to see visits from delegations like the ones I mentioned earlier, as well as many other universities around the world and even this country, as we continue to set and exceed high goals for ourselves. So I'd like to thank all of you for your dedication and commitment to this great university. And now, it's my great pleasure to introduce our visionary president and someone who I have the privilege of working with on a daily basis, Joseph Ahun.[1124.08][1124.08](applause)
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, now following Dick's point, everyone. Let me start by mentioning one of the casualties of having everything online now, and it's that we don't have the natural light. So, you know, I please beg you, do not fall asleep while I'm talking. I'm going to introduce some new members of our community. What I would like to do, especially those who are hiding behind here the column, I would like you to stand, wave, but let's recognize them as a group. Let me start by welcoming Steve Kedish, our Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer. Steve, notice his tie. He has a Northeastern now, finally. I invited him to lunch last week. He didn't have a tie, and so he rushed with Kedro to the bookstore to get a tie. So from now on, you know, for his birthday, which is very soon, what to offer him? He needs more than one. Let's welcome also Hugh Courtney, the Dean of the Damar McKim School of Business, Nadine Aubrey, the Dean of the College of Engineering, Jeremy, don't hide, Jeremy Paul, the Dean of the School of Law, and Jeremy had somebody who worked on him to get him here, another colleague, that was very convincing, so we want to thank you for that. Thank you. Shagel Richards, who is the Dean of our Charlotte campus, Taylor Washburn, who is the Dean of our Seattle campus, Susan Ambrose, the Vice President for Teaching and Learning, Laura Winkle, Vice President for Student Affairs, where's Laura? Over there. And I also would like to acknowledge the senior team in attendance, you know them by now, the, all the Deans who are here, the Senate Agenda Committee, but let me also ask the new faculty colleagues and the faculty who have been promoted this year to stand and be recognized, and let's give them a round of applause.[1264.42][1264.42](applause) Let me start by focusing on what Dick mentioned. Dick mentioned four points, and I think that they are essential in the life of a university. And he talked about commitment. And let me add one more point to Dick's presentation. The commitment is coming because of ownership. In a university, the owners are the faculty, the students, the staff, and alumni. And this ownership is what shapes the university and what is pushing us to think not about the next quarter and the results of last year only, but there is a concept in higher education that is very important, is whatever we do has to be intergenerational. It has to impact us today, but also, our duty is to leave the university in a better shape for our successors. Whatever decisions we all do, whatever commitments we all make, will shape the future and empower our successors to take it to a next level. And frankly, in this environment, I have never seen a situation such as the one we are witnessing now in higher education. The changes that I see happening and that started over the last two or three years have been unparalleled in the recent history of higher education. And you know that what is driving those changes are the new technologies. In fact, I was talking to somebody yesterday, you know, two days ago in Washington, as a matter of fact, he's an alumnus and he's a trustee. And so I was explaining to him the changes that I am going to share with you, and he told me, "It makes a lot of sense, because our modes of communication are changing, therefore it is clear that there are going to be fundamental changes to the model in higher education." So let me tell you how I see it. We, in higher education, have had a very integrated enterprise. We do knowledge production through our research, we produce new knowledge, we do knowledge transmission, namely, we take what we have done and we try to transmit it, we assess that ourselves, and then we give a credentialing, we give a diploma to the students. And learning happens when our knowledge transmission, our assessment, and what we have done here are positioning our students for life, not only for their first job, but for life. So it's a very vertical enterprise. What we are seeing now is that this vertical enterprise is becoming a horizontal enterprise. So we have outfits saying, "We are going to provide you with the knowledge you need, whether it's for free, such as EdX, or for-profit, such as Phoenix, Coursera, Udacity, et cetera." We are seeing institutions, outfits, for-profits and not-for-profits, saying, "If you take these courses online that are free, I am going to give you an assessment. I'm going to assess not only the courses, but what you have learned." And we are seeing institutions saying, "Okay, go take your courses over there. Once we work on your assessment, we're going to give you the credentialing." So what has been a very integrated enterprise is now becoming a horizontal enterprise. Now, that has profound consequences on us and on higher education as a whole, because up till now, higher education has focused a lot, for instance, on input measures, namely, we brag about the quality, the selectivity, of the students that are coming to an institution, and we do that here. But once you have knowledge available everywhere, clearly, the question becomes, "Why is it the case that I want to attend this institution instead of doing it online or for free?" So what is the value added of the education we give, of the learning, to quote Dick, that we give? And that is forcing, is going to force institutions to focus not only on input measures, but also on the value of their education and also on output measures. And you are going to see a tectonic shift here. So given the fact that our job is not only to be happy with what we have achieved last year, but to prepare the institution for the future, what have we been doing? What are we doing? And in a nutshell, Northeastern's strategy, our strategy, that you're leading, has been very simple. We said, "We are going to be innovative, we are going to be contrarians, we are going to be entrepreneurialship, entrepreneurship, and we are going to invest in our differentiation, in our exceptionalism." So at a time when higher education was retrenching, when people said, "Look, the recession is hitting us, let's stop," we said, "That's an opportunity. Let's go recruit faculty." And that 333 faculty colleagues later, that's what we have done and that's what we will be doing. We also doubled down on our differentiation, which is co-op, the leadership in co-op, the leadership in experiential learning. We took it, as the Provost said, globally, we provide the students with four-year and five-years option. Let me disagree openly with the Provost, and I will regret it for the rest of my life. He said, "It is easy to copy the model." And let me qualify what he said. Yesterday, I was meeting with a group of students, and one student said, "But how come we don't see all universities," she's a freshman, "all universities adopting the experiential model?" And I said to her, "The barrier to entry is cultural." Because, you know, we as faculty, we have it in our DNA here, but in other places, we have, you know, the faculty have to really rethink not only their curriculum, but their teaching, but their learning philosophy. In order to learn, you integrate the classroom experience with the world experience, and that is a pain in the neck, if you have done it differently for 25 or 35 or 100 years, whereas here, it is part of our DNA. However, so on this part, I divert from the Provost, but I agree with him that emerging universities worldwide don't have this tradition, don't have the barriers, and that's why you are seeing the more and more of these international universities coming here. Now, there is also another danger, that you are seeing more and more universities using our term of experiential, open their websites, but it doesn't mean that they are doing it the way we're doing it. However, the monopoly that we have is something that now is being shared, which means that we constantly have to work and perfect and establish our leadership constantly. We cannot We cannot take it for granted there. So when people get entrenched, we move forward. We double down on our differentiation, co-op, global, experiential. We focus on user-inspired research. We said this dichotomy between fundamental and applied research is not something that we can accept. We made bets on emerging fields, on emerging opportunities, whether they are in the humanities or in the sciences, or in health, or in any, any place. We also established a leadership online, and I'm going to discuss that. First, we chose a domain that is going to serve us well, and I'll come back to that, and it's graduate education. We said, when it comes to online, online is going to become a commodity like electricity. You don't brag that you have electricity at home, or you don't brag that you have a computer at home. Everybody has it. So what you, what we have to do, if indeed everybody is going online in some form or another, what is our differentiation, and more importantly, what is our leadership? And we decided that, in fact, high education has focused on undergraduate, rightly so, has focused on PhD slash research, rightly so, but in a period of knowledge explosion, knowledge acceleration, when there are new fields being launched on a constant basis here and elsewhere, no one is here to teach those domains, to teach those new fields or new disciplines. And that's where we stepped in, and we focused on graduate and professional education. Let me mention also that we fostered an ecosystem here of entrepreneurship. We have a Center for Research Innovation. We have the Center for Entrepreneurship in the School of Business. And let me mention in passing here that those two centers have been, in fact, launched with the investment of Rich Damore for the Center of Research Innovation, and the Center of Entrepreneurship has been, in fact, moved forward with also another investment by Alan McKim before they named the school. So let's see the results of our strategy. We have been contrarian, we have been bold, we have been innovative, we have been entrepreneurship, and we have been investing in our differentiation. The results, you heard them from the provost. You know, our input measures are at an all-time high. But let me focus also on our output measures. We received the largest number of applications of any private university in the last two years for a simple reason. The students are seeing the impact of this learning model. They are getting jobs, and they are going to graduate school. And in this respect, you know, we have been viewed as the best place to provide our students with opportunities, with jobs, with opportunities to go to graduate schools. Let's look at our diversity, the diversity of our student body. Six years ago, one of, one in four students was a student in color. This year, one in three. Similarly, for the faculty, you heard what, you know, that what we have done. You heard that we more than doubled our research. But let me mention that also 25, 24% in terms of diversity of our faculty, the faculty that have been recruited, have faculty of color. 11%, 40% are women over the last six years. Now, those numbers are good, are very good. We have to be very happy but not satisfied with them. We have to continue working on this aspect. The ecosystem of entrepreneurship that I mentioned too has been very effective. The number of patents that we filed has been up by 34% from 78 patents a year ago to 105 patents. The invention disclosures have doubled from 57 to 107. Five startups were launched last year, and through IDEA in the Damore-Mckim School of Business, over 100 student-run ventures have been launched and funded. Clearly, we are fostering a system of entrepreneurship, an ecosystem of entrepreneurship. And we, as you know, we have been sustainable. We have been focusing on sustainability, not in order to get the green honor roll, but we believe this is an obligation as a community that we have. So let me now mention of what we need to do moving forward. And I want to share with you what I said to the Senate Agenda Committee and to the Senate last week and in previous meetings. We're doing well. We're doing very well. We're very happy, but we're not going to be satisfied. We need to focus on being best in class in whatever we do. Otherwise, we shouldn't do it. When it comes to undergraduate learning, through co-op, experiential, the involvement of our students in research, in community service, et cetera, we are the best in class. We shouldn't take it for granted. We should continue to work on it. We should essentially establish why this model is superior. And this is what, Susan, you're going to work with all our colleagues to foster within the schools and centrally. When it comes to the professional masters and online, let me mention the following. We are a leader. And in terms of professional education online, I think of all private universities, we're best in class. That may surprise you. This statement may surprise you, but look at what we have done. We have built a library of professional masters and doctorates. We have 49 programs online now, fully online, 25 of them are master's programs. I don't think it's matched by any private research university in the country. We have industry-focused online programs. For instance, the IBM program, the High Tech MBA that we devised for IBM in the Damore-Mckim School of Business. This, we went to the industry, to IBM, and he said, we understand your needs. They didn't want to send their students to universities, so we went to them. And we're not providing this education for the executives here only, but it has been so successful, they asked us to do it in India, in China, in the Philippines, and the rest of the world will be coming soon. Is it correct? That's what we're going to do. We have also invested in emerging fields in terms of graduate masters, fields that we pioneered, information assurance, health informatics, regulatory affairs for pharmaceuticals, et cetera. We are building an approach to online that you are using based on something that is unique to us. It's called with a kind of very academic word that you will hear more often, cognitive task analysis. That's our approach to online. As I said earlier, if everybody is going to have electricity and online, we have to distinguish ourselves in terms of content and in terms of methodology. And that's the cognitive task analysis, which was saying, what are the skills that are needed as output measures? And we work backward from those skills that are needed at the end of a program to establishing the program. We reverse the situation. We don't start by saying, I want to add this theme and this theme and this theme in my curriculum. No, we said, what is needed? What is the set of knowledge needed? And let's bring it to the fore and start from the output measure. And finally, as you know, our strategy has been to establish the hybrid approach to online and graduate masters via the graduate campuses, Charlotte, Seattle, and who knows what would be coming next. So if you look at what we have done, best in class in experiential education, best in class in online slash professional masters, that those are our sweet spots. What needs to be done? Shall we go home and stop? No. Clearly, we need to focus now on our PhD programs. And we need to be, to choose programs and be best in class in them. And if we're not, we need to rethink them. That's our opportunity. And I have asked the provost, Mal Bernstein, the deans, to work with the faculty in the schools, to look at our PhD programs. Do they pass this bar? And if not, how can we rethink them? Now, all of this is exciting because when we live in a period of enormous changes, the institutions that are not afraid of change are going to move forward. And I feel that our community, for the last 100 years, has not been afraid of change, in fact, shaped its own destiny. And you see the results today. We are a product of our past, and our successors are going to be impacted by what we are And I am hoping that our ambitions are going to exceed what we can do. And therefore, our next task is to continue to widen the opportunities for innovative ideas on campus, and that's why we're going to launch a campaign. Now, you all heard of the magnificent gift that we received from Damore and McKim, and we renamed the school, the Damore-Mckim School of Business. Remember, that's the name that you're going to use from now on. This gift is very exciting for many dimensions. But this gift is a vote of confidence in the institution, in the community, in the staff, the faculty, and the students. And we're going to capitalize on this gift, to launch this campaign, to allow us to do more and more, and to continue to move forward. With this, I would like to end with a small video. Here at Northeastern, we are celebrating a moment that is changing the institution forever. Thanks to Rich and Alan, we can advance new academic initiatives, further our investments in our global entrepreneurial approach to business education, and support our faculty and students as never before.
By sharing their names with Northeastern, Rich and Alan not only secure the foundation of our business school, they allow us to reach for the sky.
For most, the celebration is about a gift that I was able to make because of my good fortune. But for me today, it's all about the gratitude I feel to the many family members and colleagues who, as I put it this morning, helped encourage, assist, cajole, kick, or carry me along my path of good fortune. I truly believe in Northeastern. I believe in its mission, and I'm inspired by the way Northeastern has moved forward yet remained true to its essential character. Everyone who has ever been associated with Northeastern should be tremendously proud.
There are few greater feelings in your life than being able to share one's success with something that they care so deeply about. The ingenuity of the university has inspired me over and over again since I was 18. I'm a product of co-op and of the academic courses and the professors that encouraged risk-taking and strategic thinking. I believe this school can and will lead the way in areas that are critical to our nation, such as global business education and entrepreneurship. It really is amazing to see how far we have come and how fast we have traveled together with their profound and visionary gesture.
They have literally changed the destiny of our business school and our university. They have lifted our sights, empowered us to dream bigger dreams, and inspired us to take Northeastern to a level of excellence that we couldn't have imagined. Let me be the first to say, on behalf of the Northeastern community, thank you, thank Let me close by thanking one more time Dick and the Faculty Senate for what they have done. I am extremely touched by the announcement that Dick made today, that the faculty colleagues are going to step forward and be part of this campaign. That's leadership, that's commitment, and that's ownership. Thank you very much. I think we have time for questions. I know that some questions are being, you know, sent through the social media. And I, the president of, the real president here of the SGA, namely, I shouldn't say SGA, I say the real president here with us is going to ask the first question that was sent via the social media.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, President Ahun, for your time this afternoon. It's been, it's been great to hear from you so far. I think on behalf of the Student Government Association, I can definitely say we focus a lot on conversations about where the university is now. So it's always exciting to be able to turn that conversation into where the university's going. And speaking of which, that kind of leads into our first question from Twitter. And you touched on this briefly earlier, but what is the role of regional campuses such as Charlotte and Seattle in the vision of Northeastern moving forward?
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, let me mention that, and some of you heard me discuss that, high education, in fact, should not become like the railway industry or like Kodak. What I mean by that is that the railway industry defined itself as being in the railway business, and they missed the transportation revolution. They didn't define themselves as being in a transportation revolution, as a transportation company. They missed the airline revolution. Kodak did the same, Polygo did the same with the digital revolution that wiped them out. Here, high education in general, as I mentioned earlier, focused on undergraduate teaching, which is great, focused on a PhD slash research, which is also great, but neglected the lifelong learning. And in addition, in addition, high education looked down on masters. The MBA is a relative newcomer to high education. That's the only really established field that has some history in high education. So what we saw is that there is an enormous gap, and therefore, there is an enormous opportunity. Given our plethora and our richness in terms of the various schools we have, and given the fact that we're launching new fields, as I mentioned, health informatics, information assurance, et cetera, we said, we are going to assert a leadership in this domain. But our studies have shown that, you know, even when you go online, to have a presence is going to be important. And that's why we have decided to go to Charlotte, and that's why we have decided to go to Seattle. Why? Because essentially, the needs were there even in a more acute way than other places. However, to go back to your question and answer it now, it is, we are learning many things from our presence in Charlotte and already in Seattle. We are learning that those campuses are not only We are learning that those campuses are not only helping us recruit students for our professional masters and doctorates, but also are a hub for the university. So in Charlotte only, last year only, the number of students applying from North Carolina went up by 70% because our visibility increased. In addition, you know, we are working on more co-op opportunities and more research opportunities there. In Seattle, we're going to be housed with the Institute of Systems Biology, world-class institute focusing on systems biology, led by Lee Hood. And we're already talking, our faculty colleagues went there, our deans went there, we're talking about some research opportunities, joint masters in systems biology, and in addition, you know, other grant opportunities and other joint appointments that we haven't discussed fully yet, or we didn't even think about. Similarly, next to it, there is Seattle Biomed, focusing on infectious diseases. We are very strong in this domain. They are very strong in these domains. The two institutes are funded incidentally by the Gates Foundation too, and by NIH, et cetera, world-class institutes. Seattle Biomed is led by one of our students, former students, alumnus, a biologist, very well-known biologist. So we have opportunities also to have research collaborations. We have opportunities for more co-ops. We have more opportunities at many levels. So when we look at those graduate campuses, look at them as hubs for the university, for everything we do, our alumni, our students. And in fact, we are seeing even alumni who are reconnecting to the university because of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I believe, I have one more question here, and then I believe the audience will have an opportunity to come up and ask questions as well. So the question from Twitter is, do you think that the worst of the economic crisis is behind us in higher education?
Okay. Let me try to parse the question. The worst of the crisis and its impact on higher education. That's, you know, I don't know about higher education, about the economic crisis, because if I knew when it would stop, I would go and invest all our endowment here in that. So I really don't know. However, let me tell you, I think the tectonic shifts that I alluded to are only beginning. Higher education is going to be changed dramatically. You heard, some of you heard me mention that the public system in the United States is being challenged because the states don't have money to support it, and they're cutting their support. That doesn't satisfy me because we have the best university system in the world because we have publics, we have privates, we compete, we collaborate, we have small liberal arts colleges, we have private institutions. And this diversity is what makes us special. I'm worried about that. I'm worried also about the liberal arts colleges. Many of them, some of you heard me say that, are going under. There are waves of mergers, acquisitions. They're over-leveraged. So I don't think it's going to be the end. Unfortunately, I think it's only the beginning. So on one side, you have the economic crisis. But on the other side, you also have, the economic crisis is a disruptive crisis. But also, you have disruptive innovations, technological innovations that I discussed, that are changing the makeup of higher education. As I mentioned, we're moving from a purely integrated enterprise to an enterprise that will be very horizontal. Doesn't mean that all the institutions are going in this direction, but it means that it's going to have an impact on all institutions, whether they move in this direction or not. And that's why we're trying to position ourselves as leaders in these domains. So to answer your question, unfortunately, it's the beginning of the disruption, not the end of the disruption.
Thank you.
We have, we're supposed to stop at 1:00. We have two more minutes. Professor Bernstein.
Thank you. First of all, let me say that the presentations this morning were euphemistic. What Northeastern has managed to do in a relatively short time, five or six years, is miraculous. Our academic situation is desired by many other institutions. My own department, the literature department, the English department, is now drawing people recently from Yale, Harvard, MIT, Williams, and other such institutions. Extraordinary. The student body is remarkable. Students are exploring the world. People are going on special programs which enable them to learn much about what our neighbors are throughout the world. On our campus itself, we meet people easily from China, India, other countries. I think it is also true that...
And you have your grandson here with us.
Yes, yes.
And that's a vote of confidence.
And he has had a wonderful, extraordinary experience, wonderful attention from faculty and stimulating courses both. I would like to say further that what you've said about the new business school and the contributions indicate an extraordinary generosity on the part of these people. And you're quite right, it's not just a benefit for the business school, it's a benefit for all of us and will be in the future. Even though we have made such extraordinary strides forward, I think there are still some areas that deserve our attention. I'd like to mention two areas and see if you agree or not. In the humanities, the social sciences, and the world of art, there is, in my view, an opportunity for Northeastern to be a leader, to find strategies by which these three areas could do much that would stimulate not only the students here, but might indeed also carve out a path for people throughout the nation in universities. That's one. And the second matter is a more delicate one. There are approximately, I think it is about 50 people who have been here a very, very long time. Through the years, they've been asked to make sacrifices of various sorts, and their conditions in the past were not what they are today. And I wonder if you feel that one of the goals of the administration, which has been so imaginative in so many areas, might be to give a little more attention to what the contributions have been and continue to be from those who have been here a long time that have, in a sense, been a foundation for the wonderful things that the current administration has been able to do.
Thank you. Let me start with the first point that you raised. First of all, even though I would love to believe in miracles, miracles don't exist. People exist, and they perform miracles, and this community has performed miracles. The staff, the faculty, the students, and frankly, also the alumni, who stepped in to help us all are the miracle workers behind all that. But let me now focus on the two points you raised. I really believe that there are enormous opportunities for the humanities and for the arts in general. For the humanities, I see that, for instance, all the new, not only, you mentioned the quality of the faculty colleagues that are joining us. And in fact, this is a story that is happening in every program, every discipline, every department. But I believe that what, for instance, my colleagues in the humanities are doing in terms of on digital media is very exciting. For instance, that's an example, that's an example of, that will position us as early leaders in this domain. So they are doing it, they are doing it. The difference is that, you know, they are the leaders, and we're the followers. You know, they are the ones generating the proposals, the ideas. And it's the job of the school, the dean in the school, and the administration to support that, and I see that there is vision there. And that's one example. Similarly, for the arts, I think that what is happening is very interesting in terms of the arts. The arts, you know, we have leadership in, you know, that has been built very quickly in the creative industries. We have also leadership in architecture. We have a leadership that, in looking at the new media. But what's interesting is I saw the, through various discussions with colleagues who are here today and the dean, that, you know, they are looking at it in a very non-conventional way. For instance, take a look at the School of Architecture. The School of Architecture, which is a very young school, and already a very distinguished school, didn't say, you know, I want to copy other schools. They said, okay, we are going to be a leader in urban architecture. Similarly, what's, you know, the music industry, same thing. And that, I feel, from this perspective, you want the faculty colleagues to take the lead in terms of the academic planning, and it's happening. The second point, I'm glad that you raised the second point, about colleagues who have been around for a long time, and let me tell you, how many of you were at the celebration for the Damore-Mckim School of Business? Okay. You know what I did at some point? I recognized a faculty colleague, Professor McCarthy, Dan McCarthy, in front of all of us. And you know why? Because essentially, what he has done 40 years ago is now the, we are reaping the benefits of that. He is the one who mentored Rich Damore and Alan McKim when they were students. He is the one who brought them back. He is the one, when they dropped out, he said, no, you deserve better, and you can do better. And he pushed them. After they left, he stayed with them. Now, you know, some of you may know that he is the uncle of Damore, but in fact, he impacted Alan even more. He helped Alan launch his company, and he became the lead director there, and he became his mentor. So why am I mentioning that? I'm mentioning that because, in fact, this institution is not built to overnight by this administration. As I mentioned in my remarks, this institution has been built for over 100 years, and we're reaping the benefits. But the most, but we're not reaping the benefits of the decisions made about bricks and mortar only. We're reading, we're reaping the benefits of the human touch, of the human impact that you have done and that we are doing. And that's the responsibility, and that's why the importance of faculty colleagues and staff. The other day, you know, we celebrated the retirement of somebody, a staff member who has been with us over 53 years. Is it correct? 56, who's counting? Kater corrected me, 56 years. What does it tell you? How many people, how many students, how many faculty, how many staff did she impact? So frankly, you know what we did two years ago? We started an academic honors convocation. And you know that, because what is the purpose of the academic honors? Is to honor and express our gratitude for the faculty colleagues who have been here and who have been shaping the place, and for the staff who have been here and who have been shaping the place, and for the students who are here and shaping the place, and for some alumni also, who are doing the same. So this involvement with the community is not an involvement that is now, that started now. And I'm glad that you raised this issue because I think this issue is very important. How are you?
Hello. Is this on? Oh, good afternoon, President Ahun.
In terms of time, I know, you know, you can ask a question, then you can ask a question, and afterwards, we'll continue the dialogue, but we'll stop the formal event. So please, go ahead. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Yourself?
Fine.
Good. Last year, I asked you at this very town hall what you planned on doing to help, you know, increase racial diversity among students on campus, specifically in the African-American community. And you responded that we could work together. And since then, I think I've seen, seen you, ran into you many times, and for lack of a better term, you've been somewhat inaccessible or reluctant to discuss some of these issues. But to the credit of your administration, I've worked with Dr. Wankel and Bob Jose many times to see what we could do as a university. But today, for instance, you continue to mention how we've increased diversity at the university, but I don't think that tells the full story. I think, I have from the university's Office of Data and Research that in 2008, the full-time African-American students on campus percentage was 5.1%. In '09, it was 4.5%. In 2010, it was 3.8%. And 2011, the full-time African-American percentage, or percentage of African-American students on campus was 3.2%. And what I've been told by many of the officials at the university was that we are admitting a lot of African-American students, but because of costs, many of them are choosing to go elsewhere or enroll elsewhere. And that seems to ring true. I think last year, the Department of Education said that Northeastern ranks in the top for net costs as a university. So that includes all the investments we're making in financial aid and what have you. So what are we going to do as a university to continue to at least work to increase African-American enrollment at Northeastern in a substantial way, significant way? And do you have any responses to the criticism about maybe your inaccessibility?
Yeah, I have a response about the inaccessibility. I have been working with many, many of your colleagues and many of your professors. But let me tell you, there is a way of reaching out to me, which is not cornering me when I'm walking on campus and saying, I want a meeting. You know, as I mentioned to you, you know, you can talk to your professors, you can request a meeting, and that's what we try to convey to you. And that's why I meet constantly with our students, and when I walk, I talk, so I talk to you. But the point is that there is, if you want to meet with me, make a request. You don't just, when I walk, say, yeah, I want to see you, why am I not seeing you? Okay, that's the point. The second point that's more important that you raised, is cost as a factor? No. I don't believe that cost is a factor. You know, in order to, in terms of attracting students of color or students from the African-American community. As a matter of fact, you know, we have been, and I cited what I cited to you, we have been increasing the number of students of color in underrepresented minority at the faculty level and the student level. However, and as I said, I am happy with the progress, but I'm not satisfied because we need to do more. But also, we need, you know, you are a great ambassador, not you only, but every one of us is a great ambassador in terms of getting more students here. Is it going to be a concerted effort? Yes. Are we making progress? Yes. Are we satisfied? No. And the cost, one more time, is not a factor. And let me mention also that in terms of cost, what you have seen last year with the Department of Education doesn't exist anymore. We added, we continue to add. We are a university that is driven by our operations, not by a large endowment that sustains us. So what did we do over the last five years? The percentage of increase of financial aid in the university was double the percentage of increase of our tuition. So that's why I'm saying it's not a factor. We, last year also, we had a Northeastern promise where we said to all the students, if you come here for four years, for four years, you are going to know what your package, what your financial aid package is. Last year, we added another feature, saying, if your tuition changes, if tuition changes, your financial package is going also to change accordingly. And we are committing out of our own resources, I'm not talking about the government, $188 million in financial aid. So cost is not the factor. The factor is we have to work hard and harder. That's all. Thank you. Yes, please.
If I may push, oh.
Look, I don't want to shut you out, so let me tell you what I'm offering you. At the end, come, and you can do two things. We can continue first the discussion, and in addition, you know, given the fact that my colleagues is here, Professor O'Brien is here, you can make the request for a meeting.
Is that a request, or you're acknowledging that we can personally or with a group of students, you will meet with us to discuss something?
Absolutely. A group of students, I love that. I love that. I love that. You're not the only spokesperson for the community. That's, I want you to realize that.
I recognize that.
You are a spokesperson. Every... You are a spokesperson. Everyone is a spokesperson.
I'll hold you to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for speaking with us today. My question-
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Michael Green. I'm a senior here at the university in the environmental studies-
You tweeted last night.
I did tweet at you last night, yes.
Yeah, I saw that. I added a word for you, but I was hoping that you would ask the question.
Yes, well, my question-
How many of you are on Twitter, incidentally? We need more.
Okay.
We need more, yeah.
Yeah, so my question wasn't just asked by me, but it was actually the number one question asked on Twitter to you for this, for this event. And it was in regards to the disbandment of the campus-wide sustainability committee that was made up of administration, faculty, and students. We're worried as a student body that if we were to put this committee back together, that it would still lack leadership and cohesion and obligation to the community, as you stated earlier. What can the administration do to help facilitate and bring this committee back together and make it more active and make us the global leaders that we all want to be? Thank you.
Yeah. First, I believe, so I'm glad that you asked the question, because I saw your tweet last night, and I said, he's going to be there, he's going to ask me the question. So that's great. So let me tell you, and also, in the question, also, the question of the committee was raised. So let me be very quick about that. First of all, we are, you know, we are not committed to sustainability because of a committee. It will be unfortunate if we commit ourselves to the issue of sustainability because of a committee. So that's the first thing. You know, either we have a commitment or we don't. Now, you ask, okay, that's fine, but what about having a committee that can be innovative and open new opportunities for us? So you questioned directly, would I mind that? Absolutely not. Absolutely. Why should I mind having a committee? But I want the committee to realize that the committee doesn't own sustainability. Is each one of us own sustainability? The faculty, the staff, the students, everybody working on campus. So the committee will be here to work with the rest of the community, but the committee is not equating itself with sustainability. That's a caveat that I want to stress. Okay? That's very important. A committee doesn't own an issue. It's the whole university that should own the issue, in the same way that the diversity is not owned by a person. It's owned by each one of us, or by a group. It's owned by each one of us. That's the responsibility. Okay? Great. Thank you all for being here.[1774.86][1774.86]